Good evening and welcome to the June 4th School Committee meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to start by approving the agenda. Are there any changes? Lizzy, of yours?
Yep. One change is that we will be postponing ASME to June 18th. But we'll be reviewing an executive session and voting on MEA units B and D.
Anything else? So the agenda is approved? Excellent. All right. Great. Next, we'll move to public comment. In accordance with school committee policy, we welcome members of the community to share their perspective with us during public comment. We've set aside up to 15 minutes for this part of the meeting, and individuals may speak for up to three minutes each. While the school committee does not respond directly to public comment, there may be opportunities for members to address issues that are raised over the course of the meeting when relevant topics are on the agenda. We strive to engage in respectful discourse during our meetings and ask that the public comments speakers keep that in mind. Speakers should come up and introduce themselves for the record, or if they're on Zoom, introduce themselves as well. Do we have anybody here for public comment?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Catherine Conahan. Thank you all for having me and thank you for all your work you do in the school committee. I want to say I appreciate continued discussions around French programming in the coming months. Regarding French, I would like to suggest that the second lottery that is upcoming for the open spots include those already enrolled in a French program, meaning that this could allow families in single-stream classes at schools with waitlists to move to schools with a two-stream openings, thereby potentially freeing up seats at schools with waitlists. And while the structure and capacity of the French program is important, I believe the core issue is this unusually large cohort of current kindergarteners. And it would be helpful to have an updated projection for first grade enrollment across the district. Earlier data had indicated that many classes are already near or at capacity, leaving little flexibility for incoming students. And I'm curious of the plan to address this. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Zadie Rose, and thank you all for your service and for allowing citizens the opportunity to speak. Similar to the previous speaker, I'm here to address the large class sizes of our rising first graders. I too would like to know what the plan is for these classes. I would like to acknowledge that our advocacy is likely will not come to fruition for next year. And at the same time, I want to ask that the school committee look closely at their policies around class size. The contract says that we'll strive to keep class sizes at 25. Our French classes historically start at 26. I know there's often attrition in our French classes, which is why the higher number for these students, but the state average is 20. So let's strive for the state average is my advocacy for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Joanne McCarthy, 341 Highland Street, mom to a first grader at Cunningham with a disability who accesses special ed services, and also the co-chair of, the current co-chair of Milton CPAC. You might recall, I was here at public comment two weeks ago. I was rudely interrupted by that three-minute timer, so I thought I'd come back and finish my comments. I spoke about CPAC's mandate to advise the district on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities, and about CPAC's ask for partnership with your committee to take up this role specifically with you. As a reminder, I was noting consistent systemic and thematic challenges we've heard and experienced. The first of those being staffing, appropriate staffing to meet current IEPs and 504s of current students. The second I'd like to talk about is coordination. It's evident and apparent to families that the management of special education classrooms and programming often exists within the ecosystem of the building. We see opportunities for the district to centrally oversee program design and coordinate resources and staffing. We will be consistent in advocating for an equitable and appropriate delivery of services, no matter what building our child attends each school day. The third challenge I'd like to talk about or touch on is communication. CPAC is eager for opportunities to partner with the district to improve communication with special education families. And we want to be loud about the communication when it happens to be ineffective, absent, and disjointed. One thing I think families are hungry for at this time is a clear understanding of the programming and strands of special education in and across our district and schools. I do know this is on Ms. Wetmore's radar screen. So finally, as a council, CPAC's working objectives continue to be parent forums for support and community, building relationships with school and district leaders, and district inclusion practices. If there are specific topics and challenges upon which your committee would like our CPAC input, please let us know. We do intend to meet this summer to further refine our specific 25, 26 school year goals that we have as a council. And we look forward to actively working with your committee, with our interim and the next superintendent, and with Ms. Wetmore as Director of Student Services, to resolve issues which the council has observed as themes. And thank you for your time tonight and two weeks ago for continuing to champion for our children, your students in this district and in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online?
If anyone's online to participate in public comment, can you raise your hand, please? I don't see any hands raised, but just give people a few more seconds. And I see it here clearly. We have a projector issue in the room. But I see no hands raised on the Zoom for public comment.
Great. Thank you. Before you jump into your report, I realized that I didn't welcome you. So welcome, John. I wanted to welcome John Phelan to his first school committee meeting. And this is your first official week of work, I think. John is joining us. Mr. Phelan's joining us as the interim superintendent, as everyone knows. And he's not a new face to the Milton Public Schools. He's a lifelong educator, and he was the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Personnel in Milton from 2008 to 2014, after which he left to become the Superintendent of the Belmont Public Schools, holding that position until his retirement in 2023. Most recently, he was the COO of a nonprofit that supports young people with disabilities. We're really happy to welcome Mr. Phelan back to Milton Public Schools, and we look forward to the opportunity to work with him over coming year.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being here. Thank you.
So now, if you wanted to have the superintendent's report.
Sure. Thank you for the welcome. My name is Sean Phelan. I'm your interim superintendent, and I'm very, very glad to be here. We had a couple of big events in the last few weeks, but I wanted to highlight the class of 2025 graduating outside. And thank Regina for attending the graduation on behalf of her role as interim superintendent. The administrators and staff and the students and the families were amazing, so we're so glad we had a great day. I have to say, my calendar is also full of all the other events that are happening across the Milton Public Schools. I was at the Cunningham and Colley Court and almost ran over to the dunk tank for our grade five day at Cunningham. I decided not to, to be safe on my first week of work. So congratulations to all of our students who are moving up in the few days of the last days of school. In my first full week, I'm looking forward to getting to meet everyone in the Milton Public Schools, get into schools, get into classrooms, and that has already begun. I have met everybody at the cabinet level. In my hours that I put in in the month of May, I've already met every single building principal. I was at the Cunningham and Colley Court to meet the staff today and the students and walk the buildings. I will be in Glover in the high school in Pierce in Tucker tomorrow, in Friday, and at staff meetings at all schools next week. So by the end of the second week of work, I will have introduced myself to every administrator, every teacher in professional and Milton Public Schools, as well as the students who walk the two classrooms. So very excited to be here. And I also want to, before I move to the next part, thank Regina, who has been the interim superintendent for the month of May and the assistant superintendent for curriculum for the school year. I have to say, without her bridging this work, even though I've been in Milton before, her support, her knowledge base, her professionalism, her ability to understand things that move very, very fast and explain them very, very well, and support me in my transition is deeply appreciated. Your professionalism and the way that you conduct yourself every day is truly appreciated. So thank you very much.
Good luck from you, too.
I want to just bring up that tonight, prior to this meeting, we had our recognition of those who are retiring from the public schools at the end of this year. We recognized Marty O'Keefe McKenna, who was present, Jason Sharer, who was a custodian here at the high school, who was not present, Bonnie Johnson, Tucker special educator, Lisa McDonough, who worked in our business office, Christine Hodgkins, who I was in her classroom today, not only observing her teach, but looking at pictures of her grandchildren, because I haven't seen her in 11 years, and Wendy Kelly. So thank you to all the retirees, and thank you for the school committee supporting and celebrating them tonight at the reception prior to our meeting. And that's my report.
Great. Thank you. So we will now move on to the chair's report. So the first thing, get to my notes. Sorry. Apologize. The first thing that we want to focus on is to go back and revisit the, or update on the French immersion and the first grade enrollment discussion that we had last week, or two weeks ago at the prior meeting. Over the past month or so, we've heard from members of the community, people coming to citizen speak. We've gotten emails about the French immersion program, the classroom allocation, and the first grade enrollment. At our last school committee meeting, we had this as a topic of discussion. And in that meeting, we talked about bringing it up to either this school committee meeting or in a future school committee meeting, and asking all of the members to submit questions or areas of interest or topics around French immersion so that we could understand really what the scope or the why of that presentation would be. The questions were very broad-ranging. They were very wide-ranging. And in meeting with Mr. Phelan and thinking about the agenda, one of the things that became apparent is that we need to give this the thought that it deserves and that in moving forward with any discussion around French immersion or really any topic, that we want to make sure that we understand what we're asking and what we're answering and the why for the presentation. So given that we've talked about, we are having a summer retreat, a summer planning retreat where we'll go through the goals. We'll talk about the topics, the presentation setting our goals for the 25, 26 school year. And in that, we will discuss French immersion and the way in which we want to address it. So are we looking at it as an overall presentation? Are we looking at it from a policy standpoint? Is there data that we're looking at? And that will give us the opportunity to give it the time that it deserves and also allow us to gather any data that's needed that comes out of that presentation. The more, I would say, the more pressing matter, not the French immersion isn't, but I think there's no real decision or decision that was going to be made or needed to be made this year. But I think the bigger conversation or the question has been around first grade enrollment. We've gotten questions, and I think there is still a question as to where that stands and how many classes we have for French and for English. And I just thought that it would be helpful to, maybe for you to weigh in and say where we are today, what we're looking at for that allocation, and then...
Sure. So the French immersion program has been in existence for a long time. Having a choice program in a public school district really has to have protocols and procedures in order to make the choice program work and continue to thrive. And I think that the protocols that had been set in place several years ago have worked, but that does not mean that they can't be challenged or can't be discussed or can't be thoroughly reviewed. So I think that's something that we might want to talk about. And I think the issues around 26 being the class size number for French, which is different from what it might be in English, if that's a conversation that we want to have, we should have it. The effect of the class size going from kindergarten to one has been exacerbated by the larger kindergarten group moving forward. And we are also looking at our current K numbers coming in for next year as well. In terms of the sections of French, we always have had five or six. And I'm looking at a chart that shows five sections in the 25, 26 year, five in the 24, 25 year, and it went up to six in 23, 24, but then back down to five. So we're basically keeping the enrollment steady for our French program, which I think is really important. We need to keep the program robust. We need to keep it something that works for the students and families that choose it. And I think it takes what I would call constant gardening to make sure that we're making sure that all the pieces that make the English program work and the French program work are tended to. So right now, no one likes to say that there's 27 students in a first grade class, but that has been historically the way that the program has worked. And what we do experience over time, as we look at the 24, 25 class grade averages for grades one through five as we sit right now in the school year. In first grade, we had 21 in English and 26 in French. But the cohort that's in fifth grade goes to 22 in English and then down to 21 in French. I'm sure there's a lot of variables that would play into why that may be different numbers, but it speaks to the rationale behind the original premise of the, there is an attrition that takes place in French over the course of the five years of elementary. And we always are trying to account for that as we were looking forward, because no one can enter into French usually in grades two, three, four, and five, unless they're coming from a French-speaking program. But everyone else usually goes into the English program. So we're trying to navigate that and balance it as we go. The French program is a hallmark of the district. It should stay here for a long time. The supports that we provide our students in the English classroom with the science program and the ability to service our students well on that side as well are important. But if people have questions about it, we should talk about it. And I think that to that point, we can do that next year. Class sizes are a challenge. They do fluctuate a little bit, and we can keep an eye on that. The class sizes for September will continue to move and grow and shift, whether that's families choosing to not be in French and stay in their home school or folks continuing to move in. We get calls from across the country and emails from across the country. Can you, do you have this program? What does it look like? I'm moving here. My new neighbor on my street, who moved in last week, said they only moved here to move to Milton from out of state. So it's great that we have that reputation. We have to sustain that good work and that good news story that that projects. Keeping an eye on class size will be important, and keeping an eye on how we can navigate healthy English strands and healthy French strands is important moving forward. So very, very glad that we're able to sustain it and keep it in a very high level. Xena Hamad is a great advocate for the program, and I'll be meeting with her tomorrow afternoon. So the numbers are healthy. The class sizes in some areas are challenging. Our kindergarten class sizes right now, to Colley Court as an example, feel high. We have to take another look at that. And I want to let the public know that all K in grade one assignments will go through my office moving forward. I will be directly responsible for any new students coming in this year, how the placements are done, how we work with families in order to make sure that they understand what we're doing and why. And going forward, that will be a centralized function that will be monitored in a very closer way than it has been over the last few years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions? On the update now? Okay. Great. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't have an update on his, but in terms of the policy discussion.
Yes.
I know, like, one of the original pieces was that question on the policy change that was requested by the one person around, like, the preference that is currently given under policy for current K2 Milton Public Schools families versus just families of the town within the lottery process? Is that something that we are, again, talking about? I know there was an initial policy conversation. The one I joined is that one, yeah. Just wondering if that's putting...
So it's on our agenda for Monday to start discussing, and I think some of the points that John brought up, with looking at, you know, this is how it's been done so far, but maybe we should, you know, look at it again to see, are there things that we can do better? Because, I mean, honestly, like, I've seen all the emails come in. I've seen the petition. Like, you know, I'm just trying to find a solution. So at the end of the day, I would really like for us to just look at it holistically and look at every part of it versus just that one portion of it and just see if there are things that we've learned in just looking at the data. Like, you know, if there are certain schools that tend to go, you know, have more students interested in French, do we keep more classes there? I don't know. Like, however, we can make it work so that less students have to change schools. Because at the end of the day, it is nice to be able to stay in your home school. And I, as, you know, having had my girls both go through French immersion in our home schools, I do feel like, you know, I want to be able to give people the opportunity to have that if, for anyone who wants it. So whatever we can do to kind of see and take a second look at some of those things and see what could work, you know? If there are little tweaks that we can make, I would love to do that. So it is on our agenda for next week to start thinking about, and it would be a long process. But we're kind of, as we talk about the summer retreat, discuss this at the summer retreat, I think it would be helpful to just kind of look at that policy. I think it's going to take some time to go through it to just make sure, once we have the presentation, look at all the data and see if there are any tweaks to be made. But it's, I hope we can work on it this coming year.
Could I just make one point?
Of course.
This is also exacerbated by the fact that you just asked the town for an override.
Right.
And then you, you know, you hold a sign, you talk to your neighbors, you deliver flyers, and then you go into school and find out that something's less than what it was when you started. And I just want to acknowledge that to three people in the audience, there's people watching this. That was a very real feeling. It wasn't connected in the world of how we organize and operationalize the work, but it was connected emotionally to how people feel about what they were trying to do for the school and for the school district and for their families and for their neighbors. And it feels like that rug got pulled. I understand the feeling. I acknowledge it out loud. And there is an operationalizing of the policies and how we do this work in order to keep both programs healthy and keep enrollment as best we can in class sizes. That has a reason to it and a rationale to it that I think is good. But I would gladly sit down and talk about it and spend time making sure that we challenge our assumptions on that so we come out with either a better product or a better feeling about what the product already is and how we operationalize this.
That would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just think there's two things that are both related to the French program that are getting merged. And again, maybe they should be merged because there's an overall problem or like, opportunity to look at kind of the program. But I think they operate on two different timelines. Is, I think, the enrollment thing of like, how many sections do we have? What are the class sizes in French? All of that is something that, from my perspective, it needs to be settled, I would assume, on a timeline by like, budget season, right? That needs to be considered within budget season, and it needs to be done before enrollment offers are made, right? The lottery is run for families, because at that point, you're kind of setting those things. And so that's a kind of February, March timeline. The other piece is this idea that currently our enrollment process gives preference to families who are enrolled in K2 in Milton Public Schools above other families within town who have kindergarten students who are enrolled in other programs and other schools for kindergarten, which I personally think is not fair to residents of the town who are taxpayers. Right? I don't think there should be any, my personal opinion is there shouldn't be any preference that we give to Milton Public School students for a first grade seat. But I think that if we don't change that policy, that timeline impacts families much earlier because they likely aren't going to want to switch their kid mid-year. They're going to start the year with their kid enrolled, understanding what the implications are potentially for, again, staying at their private kindergarten program or whatever it might be. So that is the concern I have with delaying the conversation on the, you know, the eligibility for the initial lottery phase conversation for the French program is just, I don't think those timelines are aligned.
And I think we were going to be getting some legal advice as well on that policy, right? So I'm not sure if that's gone, come back or not. But maybe that can be discussed on Monday as part of the French immersion policy discussion. I think in the immediate term, there was a sense that because there are remaining seats in the program currently, the people who had raised that issue as their own personal challenge, they are likely being accommodated
Correct.
for next year. But you're raising a good point about families who are making a choice of whether to enroll their child in kindergarten to be eligible for first grade a year from now.
Yep.
And that, I don't know that that's something that we had totally thought through yet exactly. But anyway, that's a good thing to consider.
Yep. And I think at our last policy meeting, we decided to wait for John to start to kind of have that conversation around all of that. So we kind of tabled that policy at the last meeting.
That's a good point. Anyone else? Great. Thank you. The next update is, I keep playing back and forth here. The town, so town meeting is being held on, it's like seven days, June 16, 17, 18, 23, 24, and 25. Two things to note of that. One, we are scheduled for a school committee meeting on the 18th. So if it goes to the 18th, I don't know how that impacts us and what we, only just knowing that several people are also town meeting members. And is there any process around? Is there anything, do we, I don't know if you know? So currently, we're scheduled for a school committee meeting on the 18th. Town meeting is also scheduled for those days. Whether or not it will go three days, I know what we all hope it wouldn't go until the 18th, but, but I, but the, so I think that's one thing to consider. I don't know how that impacts us. But the other piece is, while we don't have, there's not a, there's a specific school committee warrant. I think that we would need to be there based on Article One with the, if there were questions about the transfer of funds, correct? So right now, the Article One is to see if the town will vote to amend the appropriations voted for the FY25 Reserve Fund by appropriating $300,000 for the fiscal year 2025 to the reserve fund to address any budget issues within the town. So if there's, we would need to be there to speak to any allocation that would be allocated to the schools. So that's, so that's one piece of it that we, while the article isn't specifically, the warrant isn't specifically about the schools, we would need to, I think that we should, we need to be there to answer any questions related to that. But then I guess would that, if it went till the 18th and that came up, would that also qualify as town meeting? So that just might need some, I mean, a school committee meeting. That just, I think, would need some clarification, and I'm not sure who to ask. Mark?
I mean, I think we could make the determination. I don't, if town meeting goes to the 18th, I don't think we can meet.
Right.
I don't know if M A T V would have capacity. And that's another piece. And we're required of a public site. So my, I guess my off-the-cuff recommendation would be to say, like, I think we keep that meeting in hopes that it only needs two nights. I guess there's a conversation as to if we want to commit everybody here to three nights in a row, even if town meeting doesn't go three nights, right? That would be three nights for, I think, everybody here. But hold the 18th, and then we can hold time. I don't know if people are available on the 25th. That's obviously the first week of school vacation. I'm shaking, shaking hands. Does that mean then we would want to try and meet, yeah, next week?
Are there things that are pressing that we can't?
Yeah, that's what I don't...
I mean, I know you had some executive stuff sessions.
We do have to approve, we'll have to approve ASME. So if we don't have a meeting on the 18th, and that's because their ratification was delayed, and we will take our vote after that, which I believe is... delayed and we will but take our vote after that, which I believe is happening next week. So if that's, I think though, we could just find a virtual time that everybody or a quorum of people would be available to, to do that if needed. I mean, I think we have a first reading of a policy tonight, so we wouldn't be, if we didn't meet on the 18th, we wouldn't be approving that policy.
Right.
But I guess I don't.
I mean, is there, like, I, I feel like if, if it's that contract, could we do potentially like, like an eight AM Zoom or something and just vote on that?
Yep.
Yeah. And then, I mean.
Yeah.
Potentially even do like just the public session, uh, portion of that, could we, if we needed to vote on that policy? I mean, I, I don't see, we can potentially push that till we get back in August.
Policy?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Maybe we just post for the 18th.
Mm-hmm.
And then hope that town meeting has wrapped up and we are able to meet on the 18th.
Okay.
And then if not, like, regroup and identify a.
Different time.
A time that we can post a meeting, just even if it's a morning meeting.
Right.
On Zoom, just to accomplish the vote. I mean, that's one way to go about it.
John, did you have?
I was only going to suggest that some, there are times where school committees meet before town meeting in their own separate meeting.
That's true.
Especially if it's just around the voting of a contract.
We can meet at 6:00 PM.
You can meet at 6:00 PM. We're going, you know, going to public session and then let folks know, go into executive session, talk about the contract, come out and vote it. And then we could be here and we could walk right into.
That might be.
And if we match that up with the night that we think they're going to be talking about the finance article, then that could be a, a, a good use of time for everybody at the table.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And I think the finance articles, first night.
So that would be the Monday.
Sixteen.
Yep.
Sixteen. So we could look at changing it to the 16th.
First day advisory on the 16th.
Nine.
Oh, yeah. Shirley has wanted to be alive.
Should we check and, can we just put that as a note that we'll check and see if the six, if the, that the 16th would work at 6:00 PM prior to town meeting? And then we're, then we don't worry about the risk of canceling?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll have Shirley check that up and communicate with everyone.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay. Anything else on town meeting? Just quickly, this is more for the community than us, since we were all there, just giving an update on the governance retreat that we had. So we all met Monday night and for a quarterly governance retreat, and we tried to do this quarterly. And this was an opportunity for all of us to introduce ourselves to John and to then assess our goals and see how we did in meeting those goals for this year and then begin to think about the goals for the coming school year. I think we had some good conversation around it. The goal would be to look at the summer retreat then to really begin to flesh those out, I think, and have some conversations about not only the goals, but also probably, it's okay, the topics and the present, you know, what we want to look at for the coming year. As far as presentations or topics, like we were just talking about French immersion or their policy issues, we also looked at the school committee handbook that was created last year. So just looking at some tweaks to do and just sort of really revisiting the governance of the school committee. And then finally looking at the outlines is like really how we work as a committee. And then we briefly discussed, again, the summer planning retreat, which will take place on August 6th from 6:00 to 9:00. And again, that's where we will then work together as a, as a committee with John and anybody from his team to look at the goals, look at our agenda, look at topics of conversation, presentations, et cetera, for the coming year. Is there anything, anybody wanting to add or thoughts around those school committee or summer retreat? Okay. If not, that's the end of my report.
Subcommittee assignments.
Oh, subcommittee assignments. Sorry, yes, I missed that one. That was our first one. So in the, in the drive were the subcommittee assignments. They were in the drive for this meeting. Did everybody see them?
Yeah.
I found them.
You found them? Okay. Did anybody, so did anybody have questions around them? Do we want to walk through them? So we could just do that. So for the subcommittees, we have, for finance subcommittee, we have Mark, Nathan, and me. For the policy subcommittee, it would be Anna, Lizzie, and Bow. For the facilities advisory committee, it would be Anna and me. Bow would continue as the liaison to the student advisory committee for the school committee. Mark and Lizzie would continue on the bargaining, on the bargaining team. On the joint town school subcommittees, Lizzie would continue on the town capital improvement planning committee. Mark and will be on the school building committee and Nathan will be joining him there. Bow will take on the Milton Foundation for Education representative. Lizzie will take on the MPEG Milton Access TV representative. Anna will continue on security and safety advisory committee. The, we will, there will be a new community representative on the climate action planning committee. So Nick Milano provided that update. They were, they were voting, they will be reaching, they will give us the instructions for how people can reach out to submit their resume or their interest on that. Mark, you continue on the, as a, on the vendor warrant and then the appointed representative administration. That had nothing to do with the school committees. That's the superintendent on that. Any questions, concerns?
I just want to confirm that finance will still be cross-posted so that all members can attend.
Yes. Great. Yep.
Is that true for policy too, cross-posted?
It's cross-posted, yes. Finance is the only one that's, currently the only one that is recorded though.
Got it. Okay. Mark, are you ready to spend a lot of time together next year? First of all. Do we, have we, I know it's not on the list here, but I'm thinking about the person during public comment. Do we ever have a school committee representative to CPAC?
We, before I was on school committee, there was a representative. I think one of the things, this is, and this is just my opinion, I think one of the things that would be helpful to talk about maybe in planning would be that role, like sort of what, what is the role is there or is there an opportunity for, like, because I think historically there was a representative who would go to the CPAC meetings and sort of be there just as ears and maybe bring things back. I think there's the need for the communication and to hear things, but I then, I think we just would need to be clear on what the charge is, like what the role of the, you know, the school committee member is when they're there because some of it they're talking about, like, if there are systemic issues or things coming around, I think we would just need to be clear as to what we can do in being there or is it, in carrying it forward? Or is there the better opportunity for them to come and report quarterly or what? So I think it's just something that would be worth talking about because sometimes I think you have somebody as a representative on something, but then they don't know what they're supposed to do by being there. And you sort of, it's more, then it's almost more frustrating for the committee because then they're like, well, you were there, but you didn't do anything. So I, I think there's, I think there's value in, in, in having representation, but I think I, I would love to hear from everybody on like what feels like the best way to do it to, you know, sort of address some of the concerns that the previous speaker had on making sure that, that there is that collaboration.
I think that's an important conversation to have over the summer as we look to next year because that's part of the broader sort of questions we'll be considering about communication, our own learning as a school committee, how we're staying informed about some of these important issues. Like I think a lot of those concerns are, you know, really important for us to think through when we're planning our calendar, for example.
Right.
Which is what we'll be doing over the summer. I mean, having, so yes, there was at one time a school committee representative to the CPAC. I, as you were sort of mentioning, I don't believe that was very clearly defined and it didn't generate much reporting or actual conversation or certainly not action at the school committee. But it, I think, was a meaningful symbolic connection at least. There has been a task force this past year that you were a representative of the school committee on, and if that is not continuing, then I think it is a good question, sort of what is going to be the next iteration of, like, an infrastructure that supports us to stay informed, to make good decisions regarding.
Right. Right. And I, and I actually ran into Danielle and she said that they do intend to, she was going to talk to, talk to you, but talking, she did think that there was value in, you know, reinstituting the task force. But again, I think even, I think there was, it was interesting, but I think for me, there was value in it more from the, honestly, from a personal perspective, like of understanding how things work and, and understanding the role of things. But, but again, I, I think sitting there, I don't know what, if I knew what my role was as a school committee member being there. And so that's, I, I just, I think, you know, I think it's that way with anything that's, that's not as defined as these subcommittees are. I think it would just be very important to be clear about, are we there as an ear? Are we there to make sure that we're communicating something? Are we there to come back and discuss policy, you know, bring things back, like there might be a policy issue? So I think there, definitely think there's value in it, but I think it would be a good time in that planning meeting to talk about that role and how we as school committee members on something that's less defined what our role is.
That, that all makes sense. I would, I would just note, we have representation on MFE and Milton Access TV, which I think are independent organizations, you know, community organizations that are, that are not part of town government. So I think we have a, you know, precedent for it. We've had representation on CPAC previously. So, yeah, clarifying the role exactly. But I don't even know if CPAC wants school committee number on their board, right? But I was just trying to make sure that we.
Yeah. Well, I think she was just saying.
It seems like an obvious missing one maybe on the list.
Right. Go ahead, Mark.
No, I would just, I've actually had conversations with folks in CPAC and you've have way more experience than the rest of us being on it and chairing it and all the things. But the folks I have talked to, I think generally the feedback when I've asked that question has been like, they don't seem, they, they individually haven't seen much value in like what a individual school committee member being on that would, would contribute. Again, I don't know if that's representative of everybody who is on CPAC, but I think it gets back to all the points you're making. So I think just everything you're saying, I, I agree with, just in terms of like, what is the value or are there other ways in which we can create? Because I agree with you, I think the sentiment you're getting at, which is like, how do we create closer ties and not hearing the public comment? But like, how do we ensure those voices feel seen and heard around this table and like, we have some connection to that?
Yeah.
And so I don't, it's on my head, don't know if like, again, having a school committee member at 10 CPAC meetings, is that because of all the issues that you've raised? But if the idea of like having more regular kind of reports either from a CPAC representative, not to put more work on them, or from the superintendent or the director of special education, like what, any of that, I think, would sit well with me. But again, I think it's a great idea to have a converse, further conversation within the governance over the summer.
Yeah. Because I also want to make sure that whatever we do, they find value in it, you know, and that we're managing their expectations of whatever our attendance or involvement is. And so I, I agree. So I think having that as a discussion and then maybe, in the meantime, I know that the previous speaker talked about reaching out to Danielle or reaching out to administration. And if there are, you know, if there are things that come up there, that might be a good place to, if there are thoughts about how we could be involved or communication or, you know, anything. So I, I think it's a, I think it's a great point to, in bringing it up. But I think is, with everything that we do, I just want to, like, what's the why? And, you know, is there a clear expectation or understanding of our role? So I think we should bring that up, talk about it this summer at the planning. Any other questions about the subcommittees? So we need to vote to approve the assignments. So I can do, I'll make a motion. So I'll make a motion to approve the Milton School, uh, School Committee Subcommittee and Advisory Committee assignments for the 2025, 2025, 2026 school year.
Second.
Bow? All those in favor? Great. So Mark, the one thing on that then, we just have to, for the school building committee, right? That has to be sent to them. Isn't that on one of the forms that you have to indicate who the school committee reps are for the?
Yeah, when we submit that.
When we submit that, okay.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not like.
I don't think there's anything that needs to be signed related to like Nathan signing his name or anything.
Right, okay, yeah.
But we'll, I'll communicate with Sean.
Okay.
That it's the new rep.
That's you. Great. All right. That ends the chair's report.
Okay.
For the contracts, we're going to go into.
Yeah. So the next part will be to adjourn to executive session to discuss the contracts and then to return to open session to vote. So I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Mass General Law C 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with MEA units B and D. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee as declared by the chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. So, so this is a roll call, a roll call vote to adjourn to executive session. So.
Mark?
Mark?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Bow?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes too, so we'll adjourn to executive session and then return to open session.
So we're now back in open session. Mark, the finance subcommittee?
We have the vote.
Oh, the vote, I'm sorry. You're, yep, I skipped right over it.
I can make motions.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Milton Educators Association Unit B and the Milton School Committee for a period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026.
Second.
Great. All in favor? And I will make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Milton Educators Association Unit D and the Milton School Committee for the period of July 1, 2025.
Sorry. I think that should actually be, she said it all.
Let's pull it up.
I'm sorry. Let me, please, let me double check that.
The motion?
September.
The, yeah, the.
For, for unit B is July 1st to June 30th. But unit D is September.
September 1st, sorry. Yeah, I just pasted that.
Okay.
September 1st to August 31st. Sorry, start over, maybe.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Milton Educators Association Unit D and the Milton School Committee for the period of September 1, 2025 to August 31, 2026. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Fantastic.
Now.
Now, now me. All right. FY26 Community Schools salary chart. So that attachment was provided. Katie is not here to share more information. We talked about this a bit at the initial finance committee meeting. We had some follow-up questions. She did send us, Amanda and I, a bit of an update yesterday morning, I believe it was yesterday. We were unable to have a follow-up finance committee meeting doing, due to posting error on my part, not getting it to Shaolin in time, so we did not have a conversation about it and haven't talked about it. I, generally, again, this document is related to compensation for folks in community schools that compensation is outside of the overall school committee budget, right? Because that's a standalone program that is funded through the payments of those who utilize that service. I honestly had a bit of a question for Katie that I emailed just today. So I guess my question to you, John, would be. So I guess my question to you, John, would be, is this something that we really need to vote on today? Maybe you don't know, or could we, you know, include this in the June 18th, assuming that we can talk about this just next Wednesday as a finance committee?
I don't see any reason why we couldn't vote it on the 16th.
On the 16th, yeah. Okay. Right, that would be my.
Okay.
My suggestion. But any questions that folks had on the salary table, the compensation chart as it was shared?
I do have one question. I assume there's. One director of the program, right?
Yes.
So, okay, so the hour, so the dollar amounts are hourly rates. And then what's the pay period for the salary roles below? Is that biweekly?
Yes.
The one thing that stands out to me in this is the director's salary, which has roughly $60 to $100 increases every step until you get to step.
Yeah, to clarify, those actually aren't steps.
Right.
Okay.
These are historical director compensation. That is a negotiated contract. So that's why under, it's one of the things I don't love about the, the chart itself is it used to be within the table above. She separated it, but it, it's not clear.
Okay.
But essentially the director's compensation is separately negotiated, not a union member. So they'll talk to the superintendent and the assistant superintendents, and then they'll come back to us with a recommendation for that, similar to other director positions. And then the roles below assistant director, program supervisor, inclusion coordinator, all of those also aren't, don't have steps and lanes. That is just the.
Just what the income is.
Yeah, it's what it's been historically and the most recent number is the current number. But there's, there's no step in lane system for those.
That explains it.
And the assistant director, there's only one because it's the first year there's been an assistant director for the program. So.
Well, then I'll ask my question in a different way. So I guess I don't know, you know, maybe the first director salary listed there had been in the role for 10 years or something, I don't know. But there is, there are significant jumps in pay. Maybe it's a market correction. It could, and maybe you don't know the answer to this market. So when we talk about on the 16th, could just be helpful to know what's, what's driving such a large increase in compensation?
Yeah, I think we can talk about it. On the 16th though, we, to be clear, I don't think we will be approving the director's compensation. Because the director's compensation will be individually negotiated and separate from this. But I think it's something that can be discussed within the conversation of community schools as a whole. But yeah, but that is a, it will not be included within kind of whatever motion or vote we would take on the 16th.
Good.
And you mentioned this is biweekly paying and is it like? Annual salary or is it just 10 month?
They, it's a good question. Katie would know the answer better than me. I assume the, I'm not sure what the working calendar is for the director of the program.
So the, the community schools has a school year program and a summer program. And that job, I believe is a full time, 52 week year position. And then I would assume the assistant director would also be under that work year as well.
Yeah, because I run the summer camps and things like that, but I don't. Exactly how many times weeks they get offered. That is also information we can clarify the next finance meeting and make sure it's clear coming into the 16th.
Yes, we're meeting on the 11th, right?
Yes, I believe that's already posted. Apologies for. Any other questions on this?
Mark, can I ask you a question?
Oh, please.
We sure hope to have a finance committee meeting prior to the 16th so we can unpack this further at finance.
Yeah, we have one.
On the 11th.
On the 11th.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I think Charlie is posted. All right. Next item is the approval of vendor warrants. So I will pull up the motions here. We have two vendor warrants to approve. I forwarded over the PDF files to everybody. I think we're on top of that. So I will make a motion for the purpose of at least a discussion. I'll make a motion to approve vendor warrant 46 in the amount of $251,680.25 payable on 5/29/25. And I'll make a motion to approve vendor warrant 47 in the amount of $156,971.65 payable on 6/5/25. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you so much. And last item is the FY25 budget update. So and just general kind of finance committee meeting update. We did meet as a finance committee last Wednesday on the 28th to get kind of the. Next updated report on the current budget FY25 forecast. Katie shared some information on that in terms of where she is currently projecting the school district to end. The projected deficit has increased beyond kind of where she had it coming out of quarter three. So coming out of quarter three, she had a projected deficit of kind of just south of $700,000. Was aligned to the obviously town meeting article in terms of the additional funds towards the town reserve account. So it's now looking to be kind of closer to that million dollars, which was the initial request for the select board to allocate. We were hopeful we could keep it under that, that based upon our current projections and some unforeseen cost command doesn't appear to be possible. So it seems like the school budget deficit projection is, is increased. The one positive is that we are just running out of time and so unexpected costs continue to shrink, the exposure continues to shrink. But it's obviously not positive news. We had initial conversations on what that means for kind of just the chair referenced previously, town meeting and the. Warren article that was already on the town meeting for the additional 300,000. This information's been shared with the town. They were at the initial meeting, you know, Amy and Katie and Nick were chatting prior to John coming on. And I'm sure John is now intimately involved in that and I'll pass it off to him in a sec in case he has anything to share. But anyways, they'll be working closely with the town on figuring out exactly the mechanisms for kind of moving forward with this. We expect an update on that also at the June 11th finance committee meeting. So that is kind of the unfortunate update within the FY25. Some of the costs that were increasing beyond kind of what Katie had originally projected were around sports and clubs stipends. Some unexpected transportation costs related to students coming into the district or situations changing within the district related to mandated transportation costs. And just some continued kind of process problems with. Expenses that did not have POs associated, so it was not in the system and therefore was not able to kind of fully capture those within prior projections. Subsuit coverage was another one that she flagged within that finance committee meeting as a, a place where costs continue to, to increase more rapidly than, than her projection had. So those are, we did have a discussion of like what this means for the FY26 budget and possible budget impacts. We continue to monitor that and figure out like, how are we making sure we are being right sizing accounts so that we're not entering next year with similar problems? And I think John and Katie have been discussing that and have ideas on how to. Adjust for next year and ensure we, we don't have, again, we're not putting ourselves in the same situation. And then again, separately, just within the finance committee, we talked about the townwide tri board discussion. The select board discussed this a bit at their meeting too. But talked about the tri board and the updates we had based upon a meeting that. Chair of the select board and the chair of the warrant committee and Amanda, myself, Amy, Nick and Katie all attended a couple weeks or so ago. So that is progressing. Also, I got an update after the finance committee meeting about the town's RFI around financial kind of best practices consultant. That's something they apparently have already put together, already put out, are currently receiving responses related to. So I have not personally seen exactly what Nick put together and put out. The town did that, but it's good that they are moving forward with that. They clearly believe they have the funding to kind of move forward with that contract and are, are receiving, receiving proposals. So from discussion with Nick, I assume we will get those, we will be able to look at those proposals as well and be able to provide some input in terms of the selection of the, the consultant that is, is hired. So those are the updates on my input.
So first of all, I want to thank Katie Blake for her work this year on the budget and. Providing clear understanding of the status of the school department's budget throughout the year and especially in this last quarter. My experience with closing out any, any fiscal year is that there's a lot of work to be done between May through July where we have, for the public's knowledge. We, we put purchase orders and encumber expenses that we believe will be expending in a certain category. And then we have to go through each one of those encumbered category, encumbered POs to see if we've actually fully expended that. So the, the nice part is when you encumber an expense, you can't go over. But there are a lot of times where we encumber a, a set of dollars that we actually don't spend the full amount. So Katie will continue to comb through those POs to pull out any positive numbers that will come back to the general budget to be able to shrink that deficit that she's working through. And so that does take time and I think working with the town on that is going to be very helpful. We have a meeting with Nick this week and we'll be starting to meet with Nick and his counterparts either weekly or every other week. This is a, it's not a surprise that the numbers shifted from Q3 to Q4 as we close out. I know that Katie put in some fiscal. Conditions for all folks who have the ability to expend dollars in or hire. We, I will say unofficially that we will continue to operate like that moving into FY26. I want to assure the public that the fiscal transparency and accountability measures will continue to be tightened and brought to the public. The, the way in which Katie and I will work together with the town side, but also internally in the Milton Public Schools about. How we experience hiring, how we experience folks who have the authority to expend dollars through POs and encumbrances will be monitored much more. Scrutinized and monitored in a way that is a little tighter than normal. And that's because that did seem to be something that needs to be tightened up. And I think the public wants to know, what are you going to do about that? So those controls and checkpoints that Katie has adjusted already will be utilized right from the beginning of the year. We're not going to wait until February if we're worried. We will start that way, which will be a little bit different and it might seem a little bit. Micromanaging to the folks who have been used to being able to have their own ability to spend in a certain way or hire in a certain way. Budget is coming back through central office in a very, very scrutinized way. Hiring is coming back to central office in a very scrutinized, controlling way, only to make sure that we have all the checks and balances in place to assure that when someone says, you know, where are you in the budget? How do you feel about Q1? How do you feel about Q2? That we will have an accurate description of what that looks like. And I'm glad that our finance meetings are posted for a full committee and subcommittee. Glad they're recorded. Oh, am I muted?
I don't.
Well, your audio should be muted on that.
Yeah, I thought so.
It is on the bottom, it looks like it's.
Yeah, it should be on, but that's just for this device. This device shouldn't be recording audio because it's going to be feedback.
Yeah, he's sorry and now I don't, how do I get rid of this? Sorry.
You want me to knock on the door?
Well, hopefully people can be, yeah.
We can, we can ask that audience if they, that person can hear us.
Who's doing the minutes, we have to leave.
Who does the minutes?
We're checking on the audio right now.
I didn't know if you had. The woman, I didn't have the cell phone of the woman that does the minutes. We could just text and ask her if she can hear us.
Uh, no.
I don't have her cell phone. She's on everything, email her.
How could we come back?
Let me see if she has it on her email.
Can you see who's in the audience online?
Yeah, it's.
Oh, good.
Okay, sorry about that. Hopefully if there was an audio issue, Milton Access tried to remedy that. So hopefully it's been fixed. Through the Zoom. Sorry.
So, so for FY25, we'll continue to work with the town. We'll continue to support Katie in combing through every encumbered PO to achieve whatever kind of balances we can then take from those accounts and put into the general account to reduce the amount in this gap. And I'm fully confident in her ability to ensure that that exercise takes place with fidelity. That usually is something that would go through longer than June. That is usually a July exercise. The town and the schools will close out together and we will continue to work and partner with the, Nick and his team at Town Hall to. Ensure that we're on the same page for this process. That may require. Town meeting votes or some other types of articles that I think people are talking about regarding the, the vote that's already ready for town meeting. But we will clarify that for finance when we meet next week on the 11th.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah. I appreciate, John, I really appreciate that mindset and approach of sort of bringing tighter controls through the central office. I think that's great. I just have a couple of questions about the, the drivers of the deficit increase. Well, I'll just list off a couple. One is, is the, are the $300,000, the, the $300,000 increase in the projected budget, is it driven by? Larger expenditures, like. Are the, is the, is the, is the, is the $300,000 coming from the deficit, the pre-existing deficit drivers? Or is it new costs we weren't expecting? That's one, one question. Second is, I heard, I heard you list off like substitute coverage and POs. And, you know, several months ago, I, I thought, my understanding was there were sort of constraints placed on those specific kind of expenditures, like substitutes and POs. And I don't, I don't know what else. And I'm wondering, did, did those constraints, were those constraints not adhered to or is it something else? I have one other question, but then we can start with those.
Yeah, I can, again, I'll do my best to.
Yeah, I know, you're not the, you're not the assistant superintendent for finance, I know that.
Yeah. So. First question on the drivers, some of the drivers are the same. Some appear to be different based upon the information that has been shared. So as you say, sub coverage has been a driver, seems to continue to be a driver. We have not gotten information with a breakdown of saying these are the dollar amounts that equate to this increase projected deficit. So that's, you know, information we have, we talked to Katie about and asked to have a little bit more clarity on exactly what those dollar amount drivers are. But that is new. There are some other ones that are not ones that we have previously talked about necessarily. I think stipends, compensation in, in general salaries, you know, is 81% of the budget. So the stipends associated with the sports and clubs that have gone over within that bucket, that's potentially a driver. But obviously those are tied to spring sports overages that it was going over, what kind of she was projecting. So that is very new. The transportation and special education transportation is a driver we've talked about previously. What she mentioned in the meeting last week was more related to foster and homeless student transportation, which is obviously a mandated cost that. Can come up at any point during the year. Unfortunately, when a student's situation changes, we are obligated to provide that service kind of immediately. And so that was a place that, you know, I assume she was assuming kind of a more positive view on that. And unfortunately, a situation changed for a family and so that, that cost is, is one that was unexpected. So those are some of the examples. In terms of the POs and the, the controls in place, I can't speak exactly to. In terms of the POs and the controls in place, I can't speak exactly to all of what you're saying, but my understanding is some of these things are purchases that occur every year really started at the beginning of the year. But like, and once again, she was unaware of them because they were not, a PO was not placed, they were not encumbered, but their cost of the district incurs kind of on an annual basis. So an example that she provided was the district physician. We pay a physician to be our district physician. There's a cost that occurred, occurred every year, but was not encumbered and was not included kind of within her projections. So, but I think getting more clarity on, from the finance committee side on like what are some of these other drivers, I think is a good question. The sub-coverage in particular, the only restriction that the committee and the school department, I believe, put in place related to sub-coverage is really around high school sub-coverage of trying to consolidate students. There was discussion of doing that at the middle school level and the determination was, was no, that the savings wouldn't be that significant and the negative impact to students, given some technological, other space issues and programmatic kind of problems that they would have with implementing it in terms of negatively impacting student learning, was not worth it. So the only thing that was changed really was for the high school in terms of kind of large groups of coverage. So we didn't get any further information kind of at that last meeting as to if there's a particular campus that is driving this up more, if that is still more the high school or more Pierce or the elementary schools. So that's not the information I have.
I'd like to add that the, great questions and thank you, Mark, for answering so, so well. Keeping in mind that this is Katie Blake's first year in the district, working with a budget that was not her budget, i.e. she didn't create the budget walking into fiscal '25. So to those small pieces that happen annually, the physician being one of them, until, until Katie goes through that full cycle, some of those things would not be, become aware to her unless someone brought them to her attention. So those, those pieces were some of the drivers. The transportation for the child who we have to accommodate is also a driver. Substitutes we're going to look at. We were only able to make the reduction at the high school. We are reviewing sub-coverage for the middle school and going to take a harder look at that over the summer for how we implement sub-coverage. And that's not putting students in the auditorium like was suggested originally, but it's more about the fine tuning of what coverage is needed for when, or under a lot of other reasons why we have coverage in schools for teachers who are at meetings or IEP meetings, et cetera. So there's a little bit of tightening up that we can do there. And I feel confident now that Katie has been through the full fiscal year and has made the budget for FY26, that every, every aspect of the budget, she is fully confident in, in control of and understands what the cycle looks like now in terms of the smaller, unique pieces that may be a little bit different in Milton than say in Attleboro or Westwood or wherever. And starting with these kind of conversations in July and August for how we want to start to operationalize our strategies, again, bringing our financial priority to everybody that has the ability to hire and/or expend dollars, we'll have expectations on how that's done and how that's centrally approved. In mid-May, when I was here in my role as, I think it was called consultant, but I was coming in and working with Regina and supporting her work, we actually put out another memo, making sure everybody was aware. And also for those folks who had larger departments, facilities as an example, came in and met with Katie and we started to go through every one of those encumbered POs. We met with special education and went through every single one of those POs. Those are really the big encumbered departments that have those kind of dollars, as well as meeting and talking with the director of athletics. So those were the kind of three variables that we wanted to make sure that we were very clear with, that no more money was going to be expended. And I would also say that the coming year in FY26, we will close all POs somewhere around May 1st as a matter of practice, not as a matter of concern. If you haven't spent it by August, April 30th, the money goes back to central office. We, you know, that's the beginning of the process of you bought all your tax material, supplies, curriculum materials, all those things, and now all that, now we stop it and then we pull that money back into centralized view and then begin to look at what the areas of need are. So that will be a normal practice as well.
Okay. Great. Last thing, just thinking about the 16th, when Article 1 comes up for a vote, there's going to be 15 people at the mics asking questions like I just did. And I think, I think it would be good to, I'm not asking you to speak necessarily, but to like be prepared to talk about what next year will look like in terms of controls. Maybe remind the public that the original projection was a million dollars for a deficit. So we're not, you know, this is, this is how we thought it would go and this is how it went. I think that will be reassuring to town meeting members so that the article passes.
Yeah, I agree.
Absolutely. And I didn't think that that's our biggest job.
Yeah, exactly.
Right now, is to make sure that stewarding the public tax dollars is done in a way that people feel confident and can ask questions and can get answers or can attend a finance meeting or can watch the recording of it and be plugged into that. It's really important to our parents to make sure that we're expending the dollars that follow to the classroom. And it's important for the folks, you know, I, you know, in this subject area, I want to thank every town resident who voted for the override. Thank you so much. And we, we pledge to be good stewards of the funds. And I want to say to the folks who did not vote for the override, we are going to be good stewards of the funds. We understand the responsibility and we take it very seriously. And it's important to be able to know how to live within your means and we will do that absolutely next year. And we will finish this year, we'll make it work and we will have a very, very fiscally transparent and thoughtful year next year with controls in place that we can describe.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So for policy, we just have a first reading of policy IC, which is in your folder. The only change was adding in on page one, about halfway down, the MPS religious and cultural holiday cycle, which basically reflects what we decided at the beginning of the school year to have holidays on a rotating two days, which we currently have, but on a rotating schedule so that we're incorporating, incorporating the holidays that we currently recognize, but no more than two days. And then it also says that if additional holidays are recognized in the future, they'll be added to this rotation. So just some background, we will try to schedule the holidays so that we're sensitive to other days off within that month, for instance. So we'll just kind of move around which year, what holiday gets off, is off so that we don't end up with four weeks in a row where there's only four days of school. So things like that. So just trying to be mindful of those things so that time on learning isn't impacted. So just some language around that. So this is just a first reading. That was the only change.
And this is reflected on our calendar document. We just wanted to align the policy to include that information.
Only question I had in reading over it is our, I think, I think our calendar historical practice at least is that the, the Jewish holiday that is celebrated, that can change because obviously we were only recognizing Good Friday and the Jewish holiday. So are we now saying kind of within this that obviously we, Yom Kippur would be the only Jewish holiday that we would recognize within the calendar and obviously would be recognized within years where Yom Kippur is not falling on a weekend day in terms of a day off of school? Because right now, if Yom Kippur is on a, on a weekend, I think Rosh Hashanah is recognized. So I just wanted to.
Yeah, that, that would be, and I think every year we'll basically have to look at the calendar and see, I mean, do you, does it make sense, Lucy, to add that?
Sure.
Extra day off? I mean, that, or would that, I mean, not extra day off, but like the extra holiday.
Yeah, I don't think I'm proposing doing the extra holiday. I just mostly wanted to confirm from my own understanding of this, that's like why? And also if anybody's seeing that that holiday is not included, because we're not, we don't have both EDS on here.
Right, we don't.
So I think that's right. I just, just want to make sure that was clear in my head.
Yeah.
The only thing I would, I wonder is, do we need to state how the decision is made? Do you know, like, right now, it says that we're doing, that these are the ones that we're recognizing and we say each year, two of these holidays are celebrated with, with a rotation, but I don't think it's.
I don't think we want to get too prescriptive in the policy. I think, I think we want to communicate the intent of like what we've committed to doing. But as you were saying, Anna, like the particular, like process of determining on that rotating basis, like which two holidays, there not like going to be a strict order in which, because it will depend on the calendar every year.
I guess maybe even saying that, I guess, I guess the question is leaving it up to misinterpretation. Do you know, like you, misinterpretation on how they're chosen, almost like the way you said it, like, you know, keeping in mind, like the, sort of what you're looking at in the calendar in order to determine which two days are followed? Like I recognize that, I just, I think it's almost like if it's too broad, then it, then it, I don't think you understand the, like how and why the dates were chosen as opposed to saying, keeping in mind, you know, not having four days off. I don't know, it just feels like maybe there needs to be a little bit more around the process by which you're determining. The procedure for determining, the procedure for determining it.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree with the point of like that there is a separation between procedure and policy and get that, but maybe within this, just adding, I don't think there's language right now as I'm seeing it, saying that the goal is to create kind of an equal splits.
Distribution.
Yeah, equal distribution, thank you, of kind of how these, how often these holidays are celebrated. So again, we might not be guaranteeing, I mean, are we trying to guarantee that within a three-year period, each of these holidays is recognized? Maybe not because of the calendar committee, but that like over, you know, the goal is to have an equal distribution and therefore, and if we are, or any future school committee is looking at that, we can look at, you know, what have been the past few years been in terms of this and are we following this policy? Are we having this equal distribution?
I think, I mean, then it kind of limits us because if there is a certain holiday that we haven't been able to recognize in three years, like it wouldn't be fair because we'd have to at one, some point make the determination that we would have to, you know, recognize that holiday because of when it falls, right? So I think if we, I mean, I think we're just going to try to be as sensitive as possible. And, you know, I think this is something that the superintendent, as the first part of the calendar says, would be discussing with the MEA and figuring it out before they bring to school committee. So all of that would kind of be looked at before it comes to our table, but the intention will be to be, you know, make sure there's no half-days the same week as, you know, a holiday and things like that. That can be controlled, I guess.
Yeah, I think I just, I think a bit to the point Amanda's making, I think even if we add language in there to say like, the goal, the goal being to create equal distribution of these days, the committee's goal.
Where, where possible.
Yeah.
I just made a copy of the policy into the folder. So if we want to, as we're, yeah, if we want to.
I don't, I don't have, yeah, great, perfect language, but I don't know if that.
No, it does, yeah, I mean, because I think, like, we've all had the conversation, but if I think, if you jump two years and somebody's reading this and then there's the, sort of the language that you're using, saying that we're, that we're recognizing these, if it, and if it's the idea of, you know, equity and making sure that like all of these are recognized on some sort of schedule, I don't, I just, I don't think that that's in there if you're coming at it without the knowledge of all the conversations that have been had. So I think just sort of to Mark's point, like the goal is to represent all of these. There will be a cycle of doing so. I just think it, I just think it just needs a little bit.
So how about if, so to accomplish getting to, just to, if we can work this through right now, can I just like, so if additional holidays are recognized in the future, they will be added, or no, sorry, on a rotation with the goal of evenly, like can, can you just articulate a red line to add to this? To just, we can work through it in, you know, in our meeting right now, but I think we need to get something that addresses people's concerns so that we can, that's the benefit of a first reading. I mean, that's what this is for.
So the one that would just look right, do one, write it in the folder draft?
So in the folder.
Yeah, just do it that.
It says copy. I'm going to change the title. This is going to be, this is going to be six, four, 25 edits.
It'd be like, every attempt will be made to evenly distribute holiday recognition, something like, that's a little bit of word salad, but that way we're not, it's indicating what our goal is, but it's not heading us into some procedure.
Yeah, I like that. On a rotation with the goal of provide, of trying to provide even distribution of holiday recognition over time.
Yeah, I mean, it's really over, so it's, it's essentially, where we're starting out is looking at, and this is again articulated on the calendar document, which I don't have in front of me. So maybe it's just including more of the language that's on the calendar document currently.
Yeah.
Because it.
Right.
It does describe it on the calendar, like, and it projects out anticipated holidays over the next five year, few years for that. I think it would be good to say, yeah, sort of, like, mention the goal of distributing the holidays. And then, Anna, to your point, the goal of minimizing, you know, seeking like, as, making it as least disruptive as possible.
Right.
To time on learning. I mean, those are the two goals, really.
Correct.
Yeah.
Could I raise a couple of other items or do we want to keep talking about that particular language? In the sentence where it says each year, two of these holidays are celebrated, that's the only place in the whole policy where we use the word celebrated rather than recognized. I don't know if that was intentional, but I'm, celebrate stuck out to me rather than recognized. So maybe just something to consider. I don't have a super strong opinion there. And then I guess I, like, the last sentence of the policy, I was just trying to like think that out, like, if additional holidays are recognized in the future, they will be added to the rotation. To me, I guess, that feels, I don't know, I was sort of like, do we even have to say But we also, like, I guess we're deciding now that if there's an additional holiday we want to recognize, it must be in the rotation as opposed to in the permanent calendar.
Or, or what we really came to is that we have two days off a year, like, I think what that's attempting, and what that's attempting to address, I believe, is that through our process of like community engagement that we did, we figured out that we're not really interested in or able to add more than two days within our calendar for religious and cultural holidays because we have a priority of preventing the school year from becoming overly long. So I think it was not, I think the point of that sentence was more so to, to indicate that, like the, if additional holidays were added, it doesn't. that, like the, if additional holidays were added, it doesn't mean we would add more days off.
Ah, okay.
It means that we would have more holidays, sort of participating in a rotation through those two days. I don't know, but.
Got it, yep. Okay. That's, that was my, I put it at the bottom of the June 24th. I don't know, that's, I don't know what you were typing.
I think to your point about recognized, that seems good. We can change it to recognize, so.
Oh, there's two of them.
No, I'm just in the, I'm sorry, I'm in the June 4th agenda, that's the one that.
Oh, do you want me to just?
I, I just put it there in case folks want to see, as I was just typing up the, the language I put in the, the bottom of that Google Doc, since we can work on it, since we're probably meeting, I don't even know. That's helpful for copying and pasting purposes, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, seems good.
I might do change, recognized. I mean, that's a good catch.
Are we working? Oh. So Lizzie, are we, do you want to work, Anna, do you want to work through the language for this current reading?
Yeah, so Mark is, we're putting something in there.
Oh, no, you didn't, okay.
I'm not, I'm not sure what that deck is. I, I put something in on the bottom of the June 4th.
Oh, I just paste it in into a, and that, into the actual.
Into the actual one, great, okay.
The word version. So if you guys want to just look at that.
Gotcha.
And it's in blue.
I could just, I didn't forget we had that, I was like a PDF.
Can I ask you a question? Is there, is there another policy meeting between now and the next time we want to vote this?
Monday.
Great. So is that what that work would be to review the revisions and come up with a second reading at the next full school committee, whenever that would be, whether it's on the 16th or in?
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
But I think we were just working through it.
This is just to make sure that we have.
The feedback.
The feedback from the group now, since next meeting is trying to not, is trying to be a short meeting.
Correct, great.
Where am I looking?
It's in the folder, it's called six, four, 25 edits version.
Also, thank you all for your work on this.
You contributed too.
Let's say that front.
So then, so the question about then procedurally, like where would that go? Like the, the, where does the, like, is there a procedure that's used to determine what the two days off would go, be? And if so, where would that be? Does that make sense?
Well, the superintendent develops the calendar, superintendent's team develops, so I would honestly look to them to develop potentially their own.
So not being involved in this discussion for the last few months, my, my vision of this is policies are the, the shorter the better, because the procedures are usually the meat, meat and potatoes of making it work. So I think once the school superintendent and his team or her team have the policy, it's our job to then operationalize it through a procedure that could sometimes be attached.
Okay.
So in the policy book, you can actually see the procedure behind it. So if folks are interested in seeing, well, how are they, how are they operationalizing this, what does that mean for me? They can actually look at the procedure. So it allows the policy language to be relatively directional and clear in its intent. And then the procedure can actually be the step-by-step pieces that would make more sense to the, to the viewing public if they were not aware of, like, how, how are they choosing these two holidays? What does that look like behind them? You could have a procedure document right behind that. So we can talk about that at the policy meeting on Monday, and we can begin to develop that for the beginning of the year. So we can come up with some sort of a annual system for looking at the school calendar from an academic lens, and then the holidays through the policy, and making sure that how we incorporate which two holidays are recognized are done in a way that's respectful, rotates, and minimizes the impact on teaching and learning and disruption of teaching and learning. I think that's the general intent, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, and in that conversation, one piece of, that can be guidance as it's helpful, could be like, again, what we approved on, when we approved the calendar, which includes sort of a roadmap a little bit. And so it, we, we were careful not to make it like a, we're locked into it, but we were just trying to provide a roadmap for like what people can expect going forward. So maybe that can be like incorporated into the.
The discussion when you do the calendar review, correct, that's a great idea. Because the more restrictive the policy, the, you can't flex, you can't be flexible.
Right, exactly.
So that the policy itself should be, you know, flexible enough to be able to absorb those year, year pieces that we can discuss at the table when we set the, the calendar for the future, for the next year.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other discussion, comments? Great, great, thank you, Anna. So the next thing we have is approval of the minutes, which you now have two copies of in your folder. Even if anybody had any changes, they were quite long.
Yeah, just to be clear, the two different documents are the same.
They're the same, yeah. I was just being, I was being extra efficient, sorry. I didn't see it in there when I looked before.
There was only one small typo of the sophomore student rep's last name, and I just missed the edit onto it.
Great. And I made one update to the spelling of one of the public comment speaker's names. Zady Rose.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion.
Great.
Make a motion to approve Milton School Committee meeting minutes of May 21, 2025.
Second.
Great. All in favor? Great. Excellent. Last thing is a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I missed everything, next meeting agenda items, I'm jumping ahead again. So the, we were talking about meeting on this, on the 16th at 6:00, discussing the, we'd have a, we'd have a vote.
With an executive session.
Right.
For approving minutes.
Right. And then a second reading, this, no, a second reading of this, yeah, of the calendar. And then any, Mark, we would also provide an update based on our, the, the meeting on the 11th, right? Provide any finance, finance update. Do you have any meetings?
Do we need to vote on the Milton Community Schools salary grid? Yeah, I think that would be included. Oh, okay, got it. We're having School Building Committee, which will have Facility Advisory Committee, but we're trying to keep it a short meeting from.
I think it'll be a short update. Okay. So facilities and school building?
Yeah, those are happening. I mean, if we don't want to put them on the agenda for the update, we save that. I don't anticipate anything that being happening.
Yeah, because it'll be in it, we'll have an hour. Okay. Anything else? Lizzie, did you have anything? No? Okay, great. Now, does anybody have a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor, second?
Oh, all in favor. Sorry.
It's okay. At 9:08. Thank you, everyone.